Good evening and welcome to this meeting, the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. We could have roll call for himself.
Commissioner Whitton.
Present.
Commissioner Wadilla.
Here.
Commissioner Leamy.
Here.
Commissioner Priggin.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Here.
And Chair Stephenson.
Here. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Wadilla will lead us to see.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we will take public testimony for anyone that wants to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item. Anyone online wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Okay. We will go ahead and begin with tonight's hearings. We have two case files this evening. The first one is case file LU zero-zero-one-eight dash two-zero-two-two, Troutdale Grid, B E S S. This is a conditional use variance site development review flood hazard permit. This is a type-three application, and Planning Commission will be the deciding body. And before we open the public hearing for this agenda item, I'd like to explain a little bit about the Planning Commission and the procedures we will be following tonight for the public hearing. Troutdale Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who've been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivision, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision, and for other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. Tonight's application, the Planning Commission will be making the final decision. While such judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code, the hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Conference of Plan Development Code or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they've... Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then followed by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence and testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. As a final note, public hearings are recorded. Therefore, if you wish to speak to this agenda item, please state your name and address for the record. And at this time, I would like to ask if any commissioners have any expert contact bias or conflict of interest to declare. Okay. Great. With that, we will go ahead and open the public hearing for case file LU zero-zero-one-eight-two-zero-two-two.
Okay, good evening, commissioners, members of the public. The item before you this evening is the Troutdale Grid Battery Energy Storage System, LU zero-zero-one-eight-dash-twenty-twenty-two. So here on the screen, you're going to see a location map. So the lot is located in Lot Twelve of the Troutdale Reynolds Industrial Park, accessed off of northwest Sundale, the far northern edge of the city limits. Here's a basic site plan for what we're going to be discussing tonight, showing the layout of the energy storage system, as well as the driveway that accesses it off of northwest Sundale. Here are just some pictures I can come back to that the applicant provided of what this type of facilities look like. And then the application, so what is being requested tonight is there's four different items. The first will be a conditional use for the transmission lines that cross over open space zoning on the lot adjacent to the property. So I have a map here I can show you. So the yellow border is on general industrial. The land to the south of it is all open space zoning. That zoning district allows for, or the general industrial zoning district allows for transmission lines as a permitted use. However, the open space zoning to the south and southeast have transmission lines as a conditional use. So that's why a conditional use is a part of this application. A variance is also being requested to develop more than thirty percent of the site within the VCO overlay. The flood hazard permit is for any development of a lot that contains a special flood hazard area, and the site development review is for just the overall development of the lot. And I'll go into detail into each of these. We're going to go over the criteria points. These are just the different criteria within the Troutdale Development Code that were used to evaluate this application. And it is a type-three procedure, public hearing, and the Planning Commission is the decision-making entity for type-three applications. We received comments from the City of Troutdale's Public Works, Gresham Fire and Emergency Services, the Mid-County Lighting Districts, as well as the Bonneville Power Administration. All of these groups responded that suggested approval can be issued with all of the conditions of approval being met. To this point, I can go into the decision criteria for the conditional use itself. So here's the map that better shows the open space in green with the general industrial in the darker gray color. So transmission lines are categorized as utility facilities major within our development code, and those are conditional uses in the open space zoning. So that was requested. That is a part of this because it's going to be crossing over the open space zoning, whereas the general industrial, it's a permitted use outright. With the use, that conditional use, we find the criterion is met for that point. Criteria B says that the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering size, shape, location, topography, existence of improvements, and natural features. The subject property is over thirty-five acres in size and is relatively isolated from any residential or commercial uses in the industrial park, and is ideally located near adjacent transmission lines and substations to which the facility will connect to. So staff finds that the characteristics of that site are suitable for the proposed use, and this criterion has been met. Criteria point C states that all transportation systems, public facilities, and public services related to the development have or can be improved to have adequate capacity to serve the proposed development at its time of completion. The proposed development will provide the necessary improvements needed to service the site at the time of completion. It is an unmanned facility that is operated remotely, and only occasional maintenance was required with minimal traffic impacts. Any improvements to the infrastructure to serve the site can be met through conditions of approval. As such, this criterion is met. Criteria point D states that the proposed use will provide adequate open space landscaping and aesthetic design to mitigate any possible adverse effect on surrounding properties and uses. The subject property is essentially a flat lot with a long winding driveway that accesses the site off of northwest Sundale Road. The developed site will be placed far back on a pad towards the western side of the property furthest from northwest Sundale, and to be concealed using landscape buffers. The rest of the site will be left as open space with natural vegetation, and staff finds that this criterion is met as well. Criteria E talks about the proposed use as conditioned will not cause or result in the creation of a public nuisance, including but not limited to air, land, water degradation, noise, flare heat vibrations, and other impacts that might be injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare. As I mentioned earlier, the proposed use is an unmanned electrical battery storage facility that won't require daily employees on site and will require only occasional maintenance vehicles to travel to the site. The use is located near other substations and the transmission lines to connect into the grid, which will not create a public nuisance due to the nature of the surrounding area, being all industrial and no residential communities nearby. Criteria point E just states that the proposal satisfies the applicable provisions of this code, and staff finds that criteria point is met as well. Moving on to the variance criteria states that these special circumstances or conditions, including but not limited to lot size, lot shape, photography, or size or shape of building applied to the property development or to the intended use and are not typical of the general conditions in the surrounding area. So in order to develop more than thirty percent of VCO area on a lot requires a type-three variance. So the property has numerous areas of vegetation, wetlands, transmission line easements, constraints from the levy buffer zones that don't allow for much contiguous buildable land without modification and relocation of the wetland zones. Other lots in the industrial park have had similar issues, and the wetlands were consolidated on those lots to create larger buildable areas for developers. The lot has special conditions on it that staff feels would meet the criteria of a variance. And the next picture is just showing the... There we go. So this is a picture of the site here, and the battery storage system is kind of be straight in the middle there. All of the wetlands that are to be filled are going to be in that red hashed zone, whereas all of the mitigated areas where they're relocating it is to the north in kind of a purple shade, and then again to the south in a blue vertical hashed line. The next criteria point is that the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties or the surrounding neighborhood, or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. As mentioned previously, the property's location in the northern area of the industrial park away from pretty much any developed properties and no residential zoning districts nearby, the variance will not be impactful to adjacent neighbors due to the remote location of the site, nor will the public welfare be impacted by granting this variance. Staff finds that this criterion is met as well. Decision criteria point C states that the variance authorized will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the provision from which a variance is sought. It's consistent with that provision by allowing for mitigation and consolidation of wetland slash vegetation zone on the property, will allow for the property owner to develop the site and retain the natural vegetation of the site in consolidated areas along the northern and southern sides of the property. Staff finds that this criterion is met as well. Criteria point D states that the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty with full compliance and to avoid or minimize the resulting hardship. The property contains many challenges to development, as mentioned, you know, wetlands, there's easements, and there's the levy zone. As requested, the variance will minimize that hardship by allowing the consolidation of those sensitive areas on site in order to construct the large pad required for the project on one continuous area of this property. Staff finds that this criterion is met as well. Moving on to the criteria points for the site development review, this is just for the overall development of the site. This just talks about that it complies with the provisions of the underlying zone, such as the setbacks, lot area density, cover, lot coverage, et cetera. This property is on for general industrial, so the only setback or dimensional lot standard that exists is a twenty-foot front yard setback, which has been met. Staff finds that the criteria for this application, for this point, has been met. The next point talks about if there's any existing non-conforming uses on the site, which this criterion is not applicable because it is a vacant site that has never been developed. The next point talks about that the application complies with these applicable site design and development standards such as landscaping and parking. So the development will meet the landscaping and parking requirements. As mentioned, the site is unmanned and operated remotely, so there is minimal need for on-street, on-off-street street parking. The site plan shows two off-street parking spaces, which will meet the minimum requirement in the Troutdale Development Code for parking within the general industrial zoning district. The site contains vegetative overlays and wetland areas that are all counted towards the landscaping requirement, and approximately sixty-four percent of the property will be retained in landscaping, which is above the minimum ten percent required per code. Staff feels that this criteria can be met through conditions of approval. And finally, the last two points talk about the prior land use decisions. There are no prior land use decisions for this site, as well as number two is if there are any design standards proposed to be adjusted, which there are not. So neither of these criteria points are applicable in this instance. And finally, the decision criteria for a flood hazard permit. Number one states the consistency with the standards from sections one-point-zero-four-zero, chapter two, and section fourteen-point-zero-four-zero, which is our flood hazard, chapter, are applicable. The proposal meets the standards as mentioned above. Removal of nuisance or invasive plant species and the restoration of approved species is a permitted use in the flood plain. The applicant submitted a planting plan based on the Port of Portland's trip wetland mitigation plan, and staff finds that the plant selection from that plan satisfy the requirements for approval. Number two talks about the consistency with other applicable standards of this code, which will be met conditionally with the approval of a variance to develop over thirty percent of the VCO area. I would like to note that there is no flood hazard zone where the pad or driveway will be built. It's strictly along a small area on the southern property line, but due to it being on the property in general, they are required to get a flood hazard permit regardless of where on the site is being built. And that criterion has been conditionally met. So staff recommends approval of this application, and that is all for my presentation.
Questions for staff? All right. With no questions for staff at this time, I would invite the applicant to...
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Krueger. I'm with Aolian Energy and the Vice President of Permitting. Aolian is the... Aolian is the ultimate parent company of Troutdale Grid LLC, which is the applicant for this product, for this project. Aolian, the core group of Aolian, has been actively working in the renewable energy development space for over twenty years and has actively, has funded the development and been party to developments of over twenty gigawatts of operating energy storage, solar power, and wind power generating capacity across the country. Please. Within Aolian, much of our energy storage development is held in our astral electricity arm of the company, and we have a handful of people here from Aolian slash Astral this evening. I'd like to point out a couple of attendees online. Eric Stautenberg is our Chief of Development, and Jason Yednack is one of our chief engineers. Eric and Jason may have a few things to chime in on that as we go through this. Also, part of the team helping us out here this evening, I'll introduce Ken Sandblast from Westlake Consultants, who has helped us drive this project through. And sitting beside me, is, sitting behind me, excuse me, is Brian Fletcher from ACOM, who helped put together our wetland permit application that's currently under review with Army Corps. So with those introductions, back to Astral for a moment. We've been doing this, we've been focused on energy storage development for five years, for more than five years now. Currently, we have three operating projects in... Two of them in Texas, excuse me, two operating projects, one in Texas and one in California, and a third one that is completed and going through commissioning in Texas and is supposed to go operational in January. So we've all been doing this for a while. What are we doing here? We are doing generally standalone battery energy storage systems. These are big banks of batteries tied into the high-voltage transmission grid so that our systems can help balance power supply and demand as it's needed. One of the biggest things that they do is help to integrate renewable power. It comes in at some times a day. It doesn't come in at all the times a day. Afternoon solar power is one of the greatest examples. From noon on until about two or three, you get great solar power, and then it just tapers off just as everyone comes home and turns on the lights. Well, what a battery of this nature lets us do is effectively shift the delivery of that energy from instant to four hours later when it's actually needed. So we capture power off the grid, we push it back onto the grid when it's needed. Would you please? So this project is... Helps Oregon and the region to meet some of the goals that the state has set. This helps to integrate renewable systems, renewable power generation, provides an alternative to building additional transmission lines and other associated upgrades, helps to decarbonize the electric grid, helps to reduce the use of peaker power plants, which are often inefficient and fairly dirty. This is a clean energy development. It helps to provide a clean electricity for most of the metro region. Would you put the next one, please? So the reason why we are here in particular is actually important. This is located at a key node in the power transmission system. What you see up on that map in front of you, all the blue lines are the high-voltage transmission network of this area, and there are a handful of spots that are really big nodes. This, the Troutdale Substation, is one of them, where a huge portion of the power that serves the metro region actually flows in from the east and lands in that BPA substation at Trout, just up the way, before it's sent out through the rest of the metro area. So this lets us kind of intercept power as it comes in from the big generators out east and then push it back into the lower voltage grid to serve the metro region as it's needed. We're looking at a twenty-five-year lifespan for this product, and... We'll continue on here. So our site is pretty interesting. This is Lot Twelve of the Troutdale Reynolds Industrial Park. It is about forty acre, it is forty acres, but we're really working hard to scrape about fifteen acres of usable ground out of this. This is part of an industrial park. It seems like the right place. I'll note that there are multiple interconnection opportunities here. What you see on the right side of that picture is a black outline of the large BPA substation in Troutdale and the smaller Pacific Core Substation in Troutdale. And then over at the far left, we have PGE's Blue Lake Substation. And what you see in the red and orange lines are all the existing transmission lines that run through that area. So what we're doing in terms of adding a transmission line is not really anything different than what's already there. I'll note also that this is a, this is actually a brownfield. This is all part of the Reynolds Metal Superfund Site. So this represents a productive use of land that has been sidelined for quite a few years due to contamination. Luckily, this site itself seems to have almost nothing. There seems to be a little bit of fairly deep groundwater contamination left at the very eastern edge, at kind of just at Sundial Road, but the rest of the site seems clean. So... This is a challenging site. We have a lot of constraints. The whole north side of the site is within a levy easement, and the SDIC and the Army Corps have plans to improve that levy, to strengthen it. And so they have, we've had to work with them to make sure that our plans accommodate their future plans. Across the bottom third, you see there's a couple of transmission lines that go across the bottom of the site and have, each have a hundred-foot-wide transmission corridor. There is a flood plain at the south end, and then the big one, the wetlands. These have been delineated. It's been through DSL and receives a concurrence on our delineation. So... I wasn't kidding when I said we're trying to scrape fifteen acres out of this. This is a challenging site because the usable ground is kind of broken up into patches that aren't fully... They're not entirely buildable, and they're certainly not contiguous. So what we're trying to do is reconfigure this site by filling some of the central wetlands, creating a big, fully buildable pad, and creating that broad swath of wetlands across the north side inside the levy that is designed to actually overcompensate just a little bit for all of our permanent wetland impacts. And that is both impacts within our site, as well as impacts from the transmission lines that would cross the Port of Portland's open space. So that, those impacts have been incorporated here. We do have a joint permit application currently in review with Army Corps and DSL, which Brian and his team at ACOM helped to put together. I think we will get an answer on that, what probably might be before Christmas, but we don't really know. It's Army Corps. They're on their own track. All right. That wetland mitigation plan creates wetlands that would be planted and managed effectively identically to the surrounding wetlands that the Port of Portland has created. So we've taken their design, their planting plans, their planting schemes, and everything that they have learned in the past few years as they've done planting and mitigation, and incorporated that all into our design. The new wetlands, we believe, will provide a higher-quality habitat than what currently exists, which has a lot of invasives out there and really interesting hydrologic scheme. And I know monitoring and mitigation for success is important when it comes to mitigation. We do have to do five years' worth of monitoring for vegetation success and hydrologic success to make sure that this actually works. So with all that, assuming we can fill and recreate some wetlands, we end up with a fully buildable pad. we end up with a fully buildable pad that gives us the ability to put a 320-megawatt, four-hour battery system on this site. And that's based on a Tesla Megapack technology. I'll come back to Tesla Megapacks in a few minutes. A few key features in sight. It is very important to have fire access throughout, so this whole thing has been designed to comply with your local fire codes. We treat the entire best pad as impervious for purposes of designing stormwater systems. So those have been designed and they're in there. And that's all part of the package that is currently in front of Army Corps as well. We know that the access drive already provides some access to the existing transmission lines that are out there. That will continue, we'll work with the transmission owners as we go through and work towards final design. All right. This project has been designed around a Tesla product. This is the Megapack 2XL. This is a containerized battery system design. This is a non-walk-in enclosure. There are doors down the side that open, so you can maintain things, but you don't get in it. Would you flip the next, please? Within each Megapack, you would see all the number ones in that are the battery packs themselves. The number two is called the interface bay, it's where we plug it in. And then we have a metal enclosure that provides weather enclosure and also provides some ventilation that allows for off-gassing so that they can't explode. I know that's a horrible word, and we'll come back to safety in just a minute. These all use a liquid cooling system. So it operates very similar to the radiator in your car, just continuous circulation through the batteries themselves and then up into radiating fans that sit on the top. All right, I said that awful E-word a moment ago, so I want to come back and talk about safety. Safety is a really, really important thing when you're talking battery energy storage systems. There's a lot of energy packed into a tiny space, and that creates some very special situations to deal with. This industry has been growing for quite some time, and there are now some very good guidelines and pieces of code out there that help us and the manufacturers get this right. NFPA is National Fire Protection Association, and they have developed a set of codes surrounding energy storage and how they should be designed on the site, how they should be laid out, how fire access should be handled, what sort of fire protection provisions should be in it. A few of the others include the National Electrical Safety Code, and in particular UL 9540 and 9540A, which primarily drive the manufacture and design and assembly of battery packs and the control systems to make them as safe as they possibly can be. Tesla has changed over to using LFP or lithium-ion phosphate cells, which do not have some of the flammability issues of earlier cobalt-based battery systems. So this is an intentional move to increase safety and also decrease our costs. We're getting away from cobalt in our batteries. The systems are designed with overpressure vents, so in the event that some of the battery packs may get overheated, they may start to off-gas. We don't want that to concentrate and become an explosive hazard. So there are overpressure vents and, I believe, also internal sparking systems, if I remember correctly. There have been some full-scale fire testing of these systems, intentional and not intentional. The unintentional ones are probably best characterized as a successful failure. Something went wrong, something in a Megapack caught fire. That's bad news. The good news is that it did, once it caught fire. It performed exactly as it was designed to do. The fire did not spread, it didn't damage anything else. The firefighters were able to protect the equipment around it and let it burn. That is the way you deal with a lithium-ion battery fire. So we work very hard to keep these safe. There's thermal imaging cameras built into these, there's continuous electronic monitoring. These are built as steel boxes, they can withstand high winds and seismic forces. There will be an automated control system, advanced control system with alarm automatic shutdown procedures. In the event that something is found to be running hot, the system will shut that piece, will shut that down so that hopefully it should not progress to that worst-case situation. We do ongoing performance analytics. We run virtual plants, we can do predictive capabilities, continuous gas monitoring and detection. We will be having alarms tied in with Gresham Fire, so they'll be involved. The site itself is secure and will be physically secure and electronically secure. We do also have long-term service contracts with the manufacturer for them to come in and make sure that all is right. So this is with multiple levels of safety and security, all of which are intended to keep this thing up and running for the next 25 years. With that, I'm sure you'll have a question or two. I'll leave you with a picture of what we think this thing will look like as you might fly over it. I would be happy to take any questions you might have, seeing no audience members here.
Commissioner?
Yeah, this was actually pretty exciting to see come through compared to a lot of the stuff we do get.
Thanks.
And there's a lot of detail in here, but not a whole lot about the overall project, right? So you're mentioning 320-megawatt storage capacity. I haven't seen what the demand numbers are. Do you know what the demand numbers are of these transmission lines?
I'm not sure what you mean by demand numbers.
Well, whether you pick demand or average demand, I'm just trying to get an idea of what the scale is here for usage.
Eric, is that something you might be able to?
Either that or a percentage of what the battery is compared to what the expected demand is.
Sure, yes, this is Eric Stoughtonberg, Chief Development Officer at EOLI. And yeah, so between the BPA substation, the Pacific Core substation, and the Portland substation, several gigawatts of power can flow in and out of that area reliably to serve the totality of the metro area. I do think a good comparison is, you know, a city of approximately 100,000 people in a general weather climate might have a peak electric demand of 250 megawatts. So this is enough energy to serve a small city or comparatively a fraction of the total peak demand in the Portland metro area. So it would cover more than the electric demand of just the city of Troutdale, but it'd include Gresham and Fairview, etc., sort of the eastern half of the Portland metro area in terms of electric demand.
Can this help with bumps and browns? The spikes and dips within the electrical system?
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the big things this does, it smoothes out that difference between power demand and power supply and when those things are coming differently.
Yeah, my only thought was really, I wish it was bigger, actually. It's a pretty cool idea, glad to see this coming forward.
After the five years, what happens or what monitoring of the wetlands is there? After five years, there is no requirement for ongoing monitoring, but we will continue to manage it to be a successful wetland.
When you're talking about batteries and fire, which is what most people think about, what happens to the ground, once that fire, I mean, we're talking groundwater. It's already been this near a Superfund Site. We've already had issues with the last big business that was there. I'm sure batteries have lithium and all the other minerals that they use to charge. What happens if that leaks or is there a way to prevent it from leaking? Batteries were out, where did those batteries go?
Okay, there's a whole series of questions in there, let's see what I can take here. The first is, what happens when there's a fire? Which, we hope there will never be. If there is a fire, we will be left with a pile of ash and twisted steel. There will not be a liquid component that could seep into the ground. The firefighting water is used not to battle the blaze, we don't really contaminate that, but to cool things around it, and that can run off. Jason, I might ask you to say a word or two here on this.
Yeah, the important part is that we don't, you know, the emergency response procedure is to not put water on the fire. It's to stand back and monitor it, ensure there is no immediate danger to any of the surrounding areas or propagation of that fire. If water is contaminated, you can look at some potential cleanup. It's not sinically in large quantities because, again, not using it to fight the actual fire. And a lot of the energy and the chemicals are actually burned up during the fire process. So a lot of the byproducts we have are plastics and metals and things that are actually fairly typical of a house fire. So there's not any unique hazard that has to be considered when approaching the cleanup after an event.
Security-wise, what's the security system around this so that we prevent someone from getting in there and saying, oh, this is a good idea?
Yes, physical security is a really big issue. The site will be surrounded with a fairly tall chain-link fence. There will be video and motion securities monitoring. Eric, anything else you want to add on physical security?
Yeah, given the size of the facility, we actually need to also comply with NERC, which is the National Electric Reliability Coordinator for cybersecurity and physical security standards, because the outage of a plant like this can affect the bulk electric power system. So yeah, there is a high level of both cyber, IT, and physical security requirements that have to be met for the facility to meet the same standards and similar standards that protect those electrical substations of Pacific Core, BPA, and PGE.
All that, it's very similar to a substation. All the battery equipment is all self-contained. There's no exposed cables or things that would go up and cut. All the feeders are underground, they go to each of the transformers to go to the battery systems. And so all the above-ground typical equipment is in the substation, and just like any utility substation, it will have security cameras and large fences.
Commissioner Wilcox?
I just have a couple of things, I guess. We would like to have heard from Port of Portland why they created such a lot in the first place when the flag lot type access. My other question is, was the former Troutdale Energy Centered lot available and considered?
Okay, there's some really interesting history here, and it's related primarily to the development of TRIP, the Troutdale Reynolds Industrial Park, and what was going on at the time with the Bonneville Power Administration and their I-5 reinforcement project. When TRIP was being developed, Bonneville Power approached the Port of Portland and said, "We want a site for a new 500-kilovolt substation in Troutdale." And that was all related to the I-5. So Port of Portland created the lot as they did as they platted TRIP. They sold that lot to Bonneville Power. Bonneville Power sat on it for a while, got approval to do the I-5 reinforcement project, and then that project was killed, and this lot just sat there for a while. And the port actually put us in touch with Bonneville Power and said, "Hey, they have this lot, we don't think they're gonna ever be able to do anything with it, so why don't you go see if you can get this land?" As for the, as for the old Energy Center site, I think much of that has now been redeveloped as TRIP and is split out into a bunch of different lots within TRIP, some of which have been developed, some of which are still available. We have an interesting project here in that we have a utility use, something that's really important and really works well in that particular area because of all the electrical substations and lines that are already there. But Port of Portland has mandate to, when they acquire land and they redevelop it, their mandate is to sell it off for purposes of creating jobs. Our project, one of the worst things I can say about our project is it's really not a jobs generator beyond the construction phase. The port told us flat out they would not sell us any of the other lands in TRIP because we wouldn't be generating jobs, but Bonneville Power could, so we went that route. Interesting history, I know it's not relevant to the approval here, but since you asked.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
So the interesting thing about that is that clean, reliable power is actually a motivator for industry. And so it may not immediately be jobs, but there's a job component that's secondary to it.
Do you want to be our salesman? Because you just hit the key point on that. We personally don't, but we enable other industries that require good, reliable power.
And those industries tend to be better-paying jobs.
Yes, they do. Sorry, one more question, let's get back to the wetlands.
Sorry, one more question. Let's get back to the wetlands. You said you're creating more wetlands than you're actually dispersing. Can you quantify that?
Brian, do you have any numbers you can pull out?
It's a little misleading, but the DSL has a calculator or what then it has to require mitigation. Sometimes it's 1.5 to 1. So if you have that one acre of wetland. If the SL says you create 1.5 acres as well. The impacts in the trip area, you also have a two times multiplier to that. So they're they're impacting, what is it, three, something three acres of of what they're mitigating by creating 4. something. I'm sorry, I have the numbers on my laptop.
Okay.
So they're creating more than are there, and that's created by, it's because of the DSL's mitigation ratios that our status statewide.
But it is substantial. I mean, it's not.
Yeah, it's at least 1.5 to 1.
Okay.
And in some cases, more than that. And specifically, it's the functions and values that are impacted. Need to be revised. So it's not a strictly acreage basis. It's also the the functions that are being lost have to be
In the vegetation.
Replaced.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious. Has anybody contracted with you?
For construction?
No, for purchase.
We are currently negotiating with PGE for a commercial contract. We have talked with BPA. We are our plans to align into BPA substation where we haven't gotten anywhere with them yet. So at present, PGE is it.
And it looks like we're doing most of our wetland mitigation to the north, correct?
That's right.
Okay, and so that storage area, how close is that to the tow drain on the levee?
All right, the Army Corps does have plans for reinforcing that levy by essentially let's see, what is it called? They're reinforcing the the lower half, but my understanding is those tow drains are going to go away. But where I'm going with that is is they gave us some plans and some GIS data that said, here's the limit of of our improvements. And the improvement plans that we have made have to stay just outside of that. We've we've given them another five or six foot buffer beyond their own plans for improvements.
Okay. And so you bet your level is quite a bit lower than that of the trains.
Enough that they will still flow. Yes.
Okay. And okay, and so you're you're in for a 404 review, right?
Correct.
Now, and I'm so sorry.
It hasn't been bad so far. Yeah, just time.
Yeah, other than where they ran out of money and couldn't review all that type of stuff. But we won't go into that, but um. And so they're still reviewing this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so part of our condition would be based on that review. And then SDIC's review, correct?
Yeah, we can add that.
Okay.
You have some condition language in there about complying with all applicable state and federal laws, which would include getting around the court.
Yeah, and it's the 404 and do you have to do a 408? In addition to the 404? Or is the 404 going to cover the 408 permit?
404, the the 404 is going to get wrapped in that.
Okay. And and the only reason I say that is it's just an area where you've got everybody that's a big sandbox right now where everybody's playing in it. And so you just want to make sure that, you know, it's all kosher, I guess, is the best word.
Good, yes, and and we we explored that long before we even bought the property. We I think I took a conceptual plan of what you now see in front of you to Army Corps over two years ago to say, look, this is what we're thinking. This is what we're thinking, you know, is is this something that could actually work and, you know, you need support? And and I got a pretty favorable response, and I did the same thing at SDIC. Got a favorable response on whether our plan for wetland fill and litigation could physically work. So, you know, with getting that good fuzzy upfront, we went forward.
Well, I just think overall, I think it's a great use site. It's it's a tough location, and I think it's a a really smart, effective use of that land.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good here.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
This time, is there anyone wishing to speak as a proponent to the application? First, I'll go in the room and see none. I will go online. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent to the application? And anyone wishing to speak as an opponent to the application? You know, we'll go online for that. Any opposed? Not seeing any any neutral parties to the application wishing to speak? Maybe not there.
Very. All right, take a motion. Chair, I make a motion that we close public hearing for LU 00182022.
I second. Okay, we have motion, second, close public hearing. Or LU 2022. Okay. Post, okay. All right. Yeah, we'll need to initially, various first condition use.
I will do conditional use first. We'll just go in order.
Okay, so just go down the line.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where did you want that at dinner at the Army Corps Engineers permit?
I would think that would go under flood hazard, correct?
Yeah, there's the condition number five under the Troutdale planning division just states that the issue, and so this permit does not constitute approval of other required approvals from local, state, or federal agencies. The applicant's responsible for securing additional approvals as necessary. Unless you wanted to add additional language, but.
Yeah, if we could just add in Army Corps of Engineers and Sandy Drainage Brewing Company. Specifically, that would be that will people have.
The sandy drainage improvement and then SDIC and
Army Corps of Engineers.
They also have to issue a state.
Okay. I'm sorry.
We're taking conditional use at face value. You did or didn't?
From?
You did have a sure.
No. Any issues with the conditional use as it stands?
None of my part.
Okay, okay.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept finding effects for conditional use for case file LU 00182022 trout good B E S S. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Wittrin? Yes. Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson.
Yes, okay, that one goes. Next up.
I had no issues with it.
Okay. Yes.
Chair, I make a motion that we accept the variance to the VCO development, fighting these effects for LU 00182022 Troutdale Grid B E S S as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wittrin, second by Commissioner Wadilla to accept finding the fact variance to VCO development for case file LU 00182022 trout grid B E S S. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay.
Ready?
Yeah, please.
Commissioner Wittrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson.
Yes. Now, just for clarification, do we have, do we need to do flood hazard before we do site development review?
We can, we can do that. That's fine. Either it, the order doesn't necessarily matter.
Okay.
Whichever it could like.
That'd be all right. Flood hazard permit would be the next one.
And this is, we're going to do as amended with the permits?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the findings of facts for flood hazard permit for OU 00182022 Troutdale Grid B E S S as amended.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wittrin, second by Commissioner Prickett to accept finding the fact flood hazard permit has amended for case file LU 00182022 Troutdale Grid B E S S.
Commissioner Wittrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson.
Yes.
Have we missed all of this?
No. Any deliberations? Good. Okay. Chair, I'll make a motion. We accept the findings of fact for site development review for LU 00182022 Troutdale Grid B E S S as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wittrin, second by Commissioner Prickett to accept finding the fact site development review for case file LU 00182022 Troutdale Grid B E S S. Discussion on the motion. No?
None.
Commissioner Wittrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson.
Yes.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we make the accept the finding findings of facts and final order and decision for LU 00182022 Troutdale Grid B E S S as written, as amended, excuse me, as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wittrin, second by Commissioner Allen to accept final order. Finding fact, final order and decision as amended for case file LU 00182022 Troutdale Grid B E S S. Any discussion on the motion? Okay.
Commissioner Wittrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson.
Yes. Commissioner Wilcox?
Can you type it in chat? Does that work?
No, we lost him for a second. He might have to dial back to losing.
Yeah, I don't see one there.
Okay.
Says he's trying to talk, but audio.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, Paul, I hear you, but I don't hear them.
I don't hear them either.
Are you trying to say something to us, Tanny? Now I hear you.
For a glance, we lost power here, so we lost the audio and visual for the room here. That's why we're experiencing some difficulties.
Got it. What ironic timing.
Yeah. Commissioner Wilcox, are you able to hear me? Okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Can we get a vote from you to accept the findings of fact, final order and decision as amended for LU 00182022?
Yes, I point my ass.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for Thank you for very detailed application. And thank you to staff. This is a top one and
And especially a shout out to Travis Fulton. Travis, your comment was great. It was a long read, but it was a lot of work on your part, thank you for doing that.
You're very welcome, Chair Stephenson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is what happens when you have a unanimous decision.
Yeah, let's see, yeah, you're gonna be back eight months, okay?